I take that back, I'm not ready.
Wow, Sarah.
Good evening, we are all wide awake here and it is five thirty on Tuesday, March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and this special meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd, Ben McGran, and Wayne Benner, Commissioners Grant Simmons and Mo's Dunkle are absent. We will not recite the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
A quick announcement that there are listening devices available. If there's anybody in council chambers who would benefit from them, please see the meeting clerk at the front of the room. Are there any other general announcements from the Commissioners or city staff?
Just for the commission's information, we will have a meeting next week on the fourth, and we have a public hearing on a conditional use permit scheduled.
Okay. And what's the timing again? I don't remember the top of my head. There are a couple of public workshops.
Yep, just do a slide for you for that.
Oh, okay, so we'll get what those meetings and times are then, all right. Next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
The move.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes and the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda this evening is an overview of and input on the comprehensive document, and I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton for an introduction of this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're here tonight for the for workshop with the commission and our consultant Miriam Goldfrey of Logan Simpson. So this is a workshop to go over the draft, all the compiled chapters, and then get your input on this, barring any significant changes. What our plan is to post the draft from early May to early, or sorry, early April to early May. And that'll be posted online, and Miriam can maybe speak a little to the platform that we'll be having that on. And we will, that will start the process. We then have a public open house scheduled that is going to be all day on April twenty-seventh at the library. It'll start eleven AM to six thirty PM. That actually is going to correspond with a public workshop on the multimodal transportation plan as well. And then we don't have a date yet for the Joint Planning Zoning Commission and the City Council to take what we've heard to that point and then determine whether we're ready to start the formal adoption process and schedule public hearings.
Are you anticipating that will be in May? Shortly after that, April twenty-seventh meeting?
We're hoping that the joint workshop would be in May. But we always have a tough challenge getting a time for city council. But that's, we're working towards that date. And again, it depends somewhat on results from input and the workshops, if that needs to get pushed out further. So that, that's the overall process. And as I said, Miriam is here and she is going to walk through the draft document with you. So any items you found or concerns or changes you feel are needed, she's here to incorporate those. So with that, I will turn it over to Miriam.
One second before you do that, just so the record, Mo's Dunkle is now in attendance. Thank you. Proceed.
Hi, thanks, Amy, for the introduction. Great to see everyone again. And you should maybe start feeling good about having a complete draft in front of you that's formatted and compiled altogether. As Amy mentioned, I am gonna kind of give you a tour of what this document has, some of the new components. Although the, the bulk of the content should not be new to you. We've workshopped these, these chapters since last fall, and now we're just making it pretty and pulling it all together. So I'll share my screen and kind of just give some highlights about what is included in this document. And then if there are any, any specific revisions or pages or questions that you have comments about, we can, we can go to those. And as Amy mentioned, in terms of the timeline, we'll, we'll want to make sure that we're incorporating and we're addressing all of your comments here tonight before we release kind of a public draft of this document next week. So any specific changes or revisions that you'd like to see now is a great time to voice those, although I will also allow some additional comments through the end of the week probably, if you wanted to email Amy with any additional thoughts, or if you had a chance to look through it later. We can, there's kind of a buffer, but we will want to address any fatal flaws in this draft before it becomes public. So now we have, you know, this, this formatted document. In terms of the contents, it looks very similar to what the current comprehensive plan has in terms of structure and what you're familiar with in terms of what we've worked, walked through and workshopped with the chapters, individual chapters. We will be pulling in a list of Sandpoint city staff here, since there's been turnover in the last three years since we started the plan. We just want to make sure everyone is recognized correctly, and we're taking a minute to, to compile that list. But in terms of content, you know, introduction chapter is an overview of the plan, the planning process, how to use the document, and it has a brief community profile included in there. Community vision, that has been workshopped with the public last fall through a survey, so there is a question of what that vision statement could be revised as, and I'll jump to that in just a minute. And then chapters three through eleven are topic-specific chapters that are framed in the same structure within each of them, so context, framework, sometimes an intent, and then goals and objectives. You'll notice that the airport facility chapter is also in here. That is one that you did not workshop, but was updated at the end of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and nineteen. Already with this framework and an update in mind. Chapter twelve is an implementation chapter that outlines plan management, how to update the plan in the future, how to use the plan in terms of development review. And it outlines the intent of implementation projects and programs. We have decided over the last probably six months to pull out the implementation table into an appendix to be a more useful tool for staff after this adoption. And it can be more, more useful for staff in terms of kind of a checklist, and it can be updated more easily than having it be part of the chapter twelve implementation. So my first kind of question here, and I'll just walk through this unless and you guys can stop me if, if there's a red flag or anything you'd like to talk about. My first question here is going into chapter two, so without giving you guys whiplash, let me just slide down to chapter two. I mentioned that we had a, an engagement touchpoint last fall with the public online to really re, relook at the values and vision statements that we had drafted through previous, previously in the project, in the process. And so the outcome of that survey gave us a little bit of insight. I think that the overall, the, the intent of the vision, the values within the vision didn't change, but potentially the the statement was unclear a little bit. So up here on page twelve, the statement that states the city of Sandpoint celebrates our local culture, character, and connections with our scenic surroundings, and cultivates a vibrant community for generations to come. That was drafted back in two thousand and twenty. This text in red is an alternate with essentially the same values written in a different way, hopefully with some clarity. And it states Sandpoint's values, its culture, history, and connections to outstanding natural resources, and works with intention to ensure a vibrant, resilient community for generations to come. So that's the first discussion point that I'd like to bring to this group. Whether this new alternative statement is workshopped correctly, if it feels like an improvement from what we had drafted previously, or if there is an alternative that we, we haven't considered yet in terms of wordsmithing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I like the alternative version better than what was originally drafted personally. I just think it says more, and rather than just, you know, it you know, cultivates, you know, what's that mean? I think we had that discussion at one of our workshops. So personally, I, I like the alternative version.
And I would concur, I particularly like the word resilient being in there, and some of the implications for implementation that might come along with that. Commissioners, any other thoughts?
I'm indifferent.
I, I would have to say probably the alternative is a little more favorable to me.
I'm with Ben, I'm indifferent. It's so close. If anything, I would like to see Sandpoint residents or something like that, but I, I think that might be I think that might not work.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you recall, when we discussed this after we did the survey, one of the questions was, the first one says the city of Sandpoint, and because this is the city's comprehensive plan, or was it the community of Sandpoint? And, and it is this, so we just kept it a standpoint. We didn't say city or community. And then just one other thing that I wanted to point out was there was discussion on the order of that graphic. So that, we had responsive government at the top, and we, so we kind of reoriented how the order of those icons go.
I think the alternate does a better job of saying this is the citizenry of Sandpoint and not the institution of the city of Sandpoint. I mean, there is a difference, but to know that it's not city staff and that sort of thing that we're talking about. It's the people of Sandpoint.
Yeah, I would support that.
Yeah. And Mary, Mary, you just looking for input, or is this anything we need to formally vote on or anything, or?
No formal votes necessary. I appreciate consensus when they're, when we can find it, but yeah, just direction on how we want to revise this.
Sounds like we have consensus on that item.
Wonderful. All right, so moving down. As Amy mentioned, we did re, reorder these values here, and so that's throughout the document. Community character and design, I don't have anything specific within this chapter that I am looking for your guidance on. But I'll just walk through this quickly, and if you want to just raise your hand or, or shout out if there's a page that looks wonky, or you had any, anything in the, in the text that you want to call out. Although I guess, so this is the first time you'll be seeing the, the goals and objectives and how we are relating them back to those value statements and pillars. So we did try to make that connection. You saw that a little bit in the, the draft chapters in, in Word. And so this is how we're formatting that, just to kind of make that connection back to the vision chapter. Okay, so the land use and growth chapter, you know, most recently is, is what we worked with, and I wanted to point out that we have re reformatted the future Lanys map and created an area of city impact map specifically to highlight and, and kind of give attention to, to that area. So these should look new to you. We're hoping for kind of an updated or more modern feel with these. But certainly if there, this format doesn't work for you, we can go back to the old one or, or make tweaks to this. But the, the land use hasn't changed since we've workshopped it last with you, although we have taken off the study area hatch areas that, that were under discussion, just for clarity with discussion with the public particularly. And really making, opening it up to discussion about all these areas with the public, not just those areas in and around downtown that we had talked about with you. So the area of city impact map, as I'm sure Amy has already briefed you, and you're, you're probably even more comfortable or, or aware of the the issues are with that, we've decided to include the the existing area of city impact that is reflected in the current comprehensive plan in terms of that extended boundary all the way out with the original context areas. There is a tentative ACA, ACI boundary amendment dotted line that is a very kind of generic diagrammatic sense of what the city and the county could come to an agreement with to kind of pull back that boundary a little bit. But certainly nothing is, is set in stone, you know, that agreement hasn't been made with the county. So Amy, if you had any additional comments on, on how to read this map, feel free to chime in.
Thank you. Just when we started this process, we thought we would potentially be negotiating the ACI concurrently with comp plan, and that did not occur. So we didn't want to hold up the comp plan for the negotiations to occur. So this is kind of our interim step. This, this line is very much driven by where we could feasibly serve utilities in the future. And so that internally, this is what we've talked about making sense as a future ACI. But then you'll see in the actions that we actually formally negotiate with the county on both the boundary and then going through a sub-area planning process for the new ACI area. So then that would be the land, those would be the land uses and the transportation corridors. So we would come back and amend the comprehensive plan at that time. But again, this was just to not hold up the whole plan for the ACI process.
A question for you on the ACI, when we look at both the context area one and, and then what is identified in blue is very rural. Is the reason there's nothing to the south of that, is that the city limits of Dover? I'm just, that's okay. So the south of that, that's Dover, and that's why nothing there would be included in this.
The only place that is not, and I guess Miriam, that right, yep. The slough down there at the south end.
Correct.
Would likely also be an area we would, but that's currently what the red line is, the current exterior boundary of the ACI.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Boyd.
So Amy, do you have any idea when those talks will happen or any timeframe whatsoever?
What we're I'm, I've been talking with the planning department, and it, you know, part of it is getting on the, you know, we have a tough time getting on the getting council, so they've got to get the county commission as well, and they have a few things on their plate. And so what I'm hoping is later this summer that, or sooner, we agree this is the process we're following. And we get to the point of, at a minimum, adopting the map and an interim agreement that says what the next steps are for the sub-area plan by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is, is there something that defines what context area one and one point five and two is?
That, those are the same as the context series in our current comprehensive plan. So maybe Miriam, it is something somehow we'll have to put a note because we've taken out the context series on our land use, but they are still in our
Right.
our ACI, so I don't know the best way to do that, but we probably will need to reference it somewhere.
Right. On the previous pages for the future land use map, we defined those areas, the colors, and what's, what they comprise of. So it'd be nice to have something similar to that for the ACI map that defines what that, what those areas are.
Okay, proceed.
Okay. So yes, that, that is right. We, we do articulate what the colors are on the future land use map here. We did add a future land use versus zoning kind of call out. It comes up a lot in our work of the confusion between the intent of this map and the intent of a zoning map. So this is intended to, to just kind of clarify some of those major points, but it is a new diagram that you haven't seen yet. All right, housing neighborhoods, and maybe I'll take a moment. We did try to pull in photos from from database that had been provided. But if there are better photos that can articulate or, or illustrate these different areas, please submit them. We, I think we've got a lot of photos from a, a few individuals, so if there are other ones that we should be pulling in, and even celebrating other, other photographers in town, we'd be happy to trade out these photos. So housing, I'm not sure I have a lot of questions on this necessarily. So I'll just kind of walk through here. Multimodal transportation. Again, this, this is, as a reminder, you know, relies heavily on that multimodal transportation plan. So we do highlight that right up front. And use the maps as well from that plan. Parks, Recreation and Trails, chapter seven. And again, this is using and relying heavily on that Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Similarly, we have that right up front, along with the vision from that. All right. Public Facility Services and Utilities. And I know I'm just kind of going right through this, so if anyone wants to stop me or has a question about these chapters, please feel free to chime in. I don't have any questions here. But it sounds like we are waiting on some additional staff review from this chapter. Is that correct, Amy? That might happen this week or maybe in tandem with the public review?
Right.
Okay. Chapter nine, jobs and economic development. How are we feeling about this, this format? Does it feel more engaging than the Word document that we had before?
It, it certainly does to me, yes. I like some of the new graphics as well. Any other comments?
Not like shows.
Great. User-friendly.
Very user-friendly, yeah, that's what we want.
Yep.
This might be a time to ask a question along being user-friendly. Where is this document accessible now to the public? Or is it not? Is this draft?
Yeah.
The draft is not available.
After your input.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Well, we are planning on using a, an collaborative commenting tool online. Conveo is the tool that we've, we've been using for the last few years with tremendous success. And essentially, we pull it up onto, we upload the PDF online, and you can use it, you can view the document just as you would if you had opened up the PDF. And just as there is a kind of a commenting function in Adobe, you can click on a place in the PDF online and put in a comment. You can see other people's comments, you can respond to comments, you can like or not like other people's comments, and it, the comment is is embedded in a specific place within the PDF. So if there's a paragraph or a graphic or a photo that you want to comment on, it'll be a little commenting icon right there where you want it to be. So it's been a very useful tool, and, and if, if this planning commission wants me to walk through an example of how that commenting tool is used, I can pull up another plan example at the end.
That'd be great.
So airport facility, this is a new, I guess this will be new to, to this group. Although we've, we formatted it probably two years ago after we, we adopted the, the comprehensive plan amendment. So we did, we did very little to the content of this in this last round of plan development in the last six months. With the exception of making the, the phrasing of the goal statements match the new phrasing of the other chapters, and I'm seeing here now that there's a a formatting issue, and I'll just make a note here. These need to restart at A. And then the final Natural Resources and Hazards chapter of those topic-specific chapters. As we go into here, I also do not have any specific changes or, or questions for this group. But I would like to go into chapter twelve, implementation, and we can talk a little bit about what that chapter has and what it does not have. All right, so chapter twelve, overview and, and an understanding of how to manage the plan moving forward. That there are types of amendments that will require action from this board or just a kind of an administrative process. We have also included plan amendment criteria to understand if those amendments to the, the comprehensive plan are appropriate, just to, as a guide for, for your decision-making. just to as a guide for for um your decision making process. And then we do also have a development review consistency section uh just to outline how this plan is intended to be used for decision making bodies such as planning commission uh when development proposals come in. So how to use that future land use plan, how to use the goals and policies and look for consistency. What we don't have is that implementation table um that uh we've been talking about. Um, however, we do preface and kind of set up that appendix A where it is now housed to to understand what types of implementation actions and strategies that table includes. So uh zoning code amendments, supporting plans or studies that might be needed, new programs and services, capital projects and investment opportunities, partnerships and agreements and new funding sources. So this is how the the plan as it is ends. Um, and I don't have I don't have the um the table open. Amy, do you want to walk through what that implementation table is is looking up to be? We're still workshopping some of those action items, but I wasn't sure if we wanted to pull that open for the group.
Yep, what I'll do is um because appendix A is still a work in progress, um but to show can you Miriam, oh, there you go, okay.
And maybe while Amy's pulling that up, um, I know I I kind of walked through this pretty quickly. Were there any other red flags or issue areas that you, anyone wanted to bring up before we move on to the appendices?
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Grant.
Uh, first off, it's it's a very nice document. I I perused it. I have not read it in detail and I'd like to try to spend some more time to to read through it. Um, because it is such a uh a large document that's overarching, is there a a way to summarize um some changes that have been made since the previous comprehensive plan so that people can kind of maybe wrap their mind around this is where we were and this is where we're going without having to go through all one hundred and thirty six pages?
Yes, that's a great idea and that's usually um part of the meeting materials that we include as part of the public open house draft review. Um, it sounds like it might be helpful just as a user reader's guide before um this group or the public really digs into it. So that's something that we could look into to creating for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so the appendix A, again, this is going through all the goals and objectives and actually coming up with what does that mean? How do we get from this goal and objective to actually something happening? So this is so far, I think there's probably sixty rows here, so this is still under review and but you'll see some of them are kind of broad, like the first one is um implement the twenty twenty one Arts Culture Historic Preservation Plan. That includes adoption of a weight binding and gate wise master plan, expanding the current public art plan, establishing a downtown revitalization program and creation of a local historic district. That's a lot in one action. But otherwise, we would have had five actions and this table would just start getting really, really long. So for for existing plans, whether it's the Park and Recreation Plan or the Arts and Culture, those are their own actions. Some of the things in those get pulled out separately. But for the most part, it is just referring back to that adopted plan and that that needs to be implemented. For example, urban forest also in Chapter Three, Implement the Twenty Twenty Two Urban Forest Master Plan. And that includes updates to code, uh tree inventory and five year strategic management plan. There's other things on that plan, but those are three very discrete items um in that plan. Winter city status, just that's getting into community character and design, expand events, infrastructure and activities that embrace our winter city status. Uh, we've got actions in there on the ACI, uh renegotiation. So these are all things that to reach those goals and objectives need to happen. Um, so again, this is a broad one, but update city codes, uh regulations to balance the comprehensive plan goals and objectives, including Title Nine, Title Ten and Title Eleven. So remember, as we were going through it, we would have one goal and objective over here that said one thing. And then maybe in another chapter, there was something that was slightly different and somewhat competing. Um, so that's when we're looking at the codes, how do we take those goals and objectives? And do the best we can with regulations to make sure we are implementing the vision of the community.
Question for you.
Yes.
Does it when when you know a lot of the nuts and bolts of this ends up being here in the implementation appendices? Does that get updated more frequently than the comprehensive plan?
Uh, does what get more?
This, I mean, is this document, a a living document on its own that can be more frequently updated than the comprehensive plan, which is required every ten years? It would seem to me this is a document that needs more frequent updating, but.
Correct, and that's that's how we ended up with pulling it out. But it's and it's also it's got timelines to it. So it it talks about the chapter, then what is the action? Uh, more explanation of what that means, what are the objectives that here, I'll go to the top so you can see the headers. What are the references to the objectives in the plan? Who's responsible? This is a you know, the responsibility could be a specifics department or it could just be the city. Um, and then actually, Miriam, I've changed this around. As I said, it's a work in progress. It's who are our partners on that? Um, and then the short term in the implementation chapter was one to five years. And then medium time was six to ten. So again, you'll see there's a whole lot that needs to happen in short term. So you're right, John, that this is something every year, what what are we accomplishing to actually get to actually implement? Um, and then some of these, as you've seen in the airport chapter, some of those action items have come off the list because they were completed. So that's the intent of this is to be a running uh implementation tool for the plan.
Would it be useful um to city staff and community if there was a another column that was progress to date sort of thing? I mean, that rather than showing what's supposed to happen, who's supposed to do it? If there was another column that says progress to date, here's what we've done. I don't know if that's just another layer of stuff that it's not worth time.
Like a quarterly update or something, so it's not, you know.
Yeah, it's not. I don't.
Every month.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Duncan.
So am I wrong, but are we trying to make the comp plan more of a living document that's evolving more frequently instead of waiting ten years or twelve or thirteen or fourteen to update it?
Um, well, it it will be the goal to review the whole plan every month. Um, but the the plan itself, those visions aren't anticipated to change before that, but this this is the stuff that will change and I I don't know that I'd say it more of a living document, but um definitely, we don't want to wait ten years before we updating them.
Yeah, because I see like some of these things that are short term, they have like a specific like, you know, create a partnership with or something along those lines where it's going to be a it it's initiating a start to something that will likely turn into several more years of an evolution of that project.
Right.
Which is part of the comp plan, so I read it as, like, I like that because I feel like some of some of what we have in here is like our reaction to workforce housing and affordable housing and stuff like that, which could be not even a topic in in six months from now. Like, we might have a totally different inventory of of all that and housing prices may be way different. So I like the idea that some of this makes it to where we can react to current economic or, you know, cultural or art or whatever in a in a faster way instead of waiting like, oh, that's ten years from now. Um, and then, because I feel like if we, if the focus is, yeah, the comp plan gets updated every ten years, that's it's never going to get updated every ten years. It's going to be initiated every ten years maybe and then things like COVID or, you know, this bad planning come up and now we're four or five years past that, which I don't think is totally a bad thing, but um I think over a ten year period, you might be missing out on the opportunity to like be more current with a comp plan.
And and I think the five year review is important because again, your visions and objectives likely aren't going to change dramatically, but they could the next five years. I mean, we've seen how much the past five years changed. The next five years could be a completely different situation than where we are today.
Commissioner.
You will, sorry, but you will see that there's a lot of these that are just ongoing. You know, um, a lot of these things continue to improve neighborhoods. There's a lot of things that are happening now that will continue to happen. So there's no short term, long term. It's just things we need to keep doing and improving upon.
Commissioner Camp.
I like the document as a measuring tool for continuous improvement, maybe even prioritization. I think it's a good idea to have this. I think that citizens are, if it's available for people to see, it would certainly help engage the progress and and us too and anybody that comes in behind. So I like the document.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner McGrath.
A couple of thoughts. Um, I I think that on the ownership, city standpoint is pretty broad. Would it be possible to narrow that down to maybe a position within the city of standpoint of who's shepherding these, whether it's like Parks and Rec or?
Right. We can do department level.
Yeah, not not by name, but by title.
Multiple, multiple departments are are going to be involved, but we can narrow that down.
Yep. Well, yeah, things that have a owner tend to get done versus things who have a broad base or don't. Um, and then can you define the timelines a little bit from maybe not necessarily this like short term, short term means one to three years. I'm just making this up. I'm not sure what they're short term means one to three years, midterm is three to five years and long term is five plus years or something like that, right? The summer, so we can put some what what that define, what that means?
Narrative of the implementation, I think, I think short was one to five.
Yeah.
Which sounds long, but it you know, I mean, if you think about starting um overhaul of the zoning code that, you know, we're going to get into year two, year three before that project is done.
Yep. And then like maybe a status column, I think there was maybe some mention of that, whether it started or not started. I think it is important to show the completed ones, at least so that we can say these are the things that have been completed, right? So I wouldn't necessarily take them off the list. I would keep them on a list and show us completed.
Mr. Chair, I just like to piggyback. I don't know, you know, like a bi annual or annual report, you know? This is what we did. I mean, I know we would appreciate that to see how our progress is the city's progress and what we've accomplished. I think that would be a great tool and it would be great for the the citizenry to see that we are getting stuff done. And changes are being made.
Yeah, I agree. I think that could help get more citizen engagement is obviously we have a lack of that. It seems like for until there's a problem and people want to complain, then then we have plenty of engagement and it's like we're trying to catch up on stuff that's already been happening for a long time.
And getting the correct information.
Yeah.
No.
Uh, well, that that's actually one of the action items in here and I can't remember which chapter falls under, but one of the actions is to create a public participation plan. So that we're we're consistently using similar terms. So we say, in this situation, this is the type of engagement we're going to seek. Where that might be different, like what we call an open house, we're looking for different things than we are for a workshop or from a sir, you know, so there there's many different ways to engage and you do it at different stages in the process. So just having that spelled out, so it's clear for people that um if something's called a council workshop versus a public workshop, those are different and the intent is different. So I think just having that document might be helpful as well.
Yeah.
So that is, so as I said, this um currently we're at sixty, fifty nine or sixty and that, you know, the risk in making it too comprehensive is that well, we won't get very far on anything, but um so we don't want it too, too long. Um, but I want to make sure that all departments are comfortable with what is in, with what we're saying is going to be happening. So as I said, it is still a work in progress.
Nice work, Amy.
Yeah, mm hmm. Thank you.
Great conversation. I want to maybe just chime in um on page one hundred and thirty in that implementation chapter. The major plan update does specify that this is a chance to reconfirm the plan's vision and direction with the public every five to ten years or as directed by Plans, Zoning Commission, City Council or Staff. So we've written in it that um it doesn't have to be every ten years. It can be before then um five to ten years or as directed by this body or um recommended by staff. Great, so uh the other appendices that we have in the plan include a Acronyms and Definitions Appendix. So we have a list of acronyms, although we do try to define uh acronyms as we use them in the plan um so that you don't need this if if necessary, but um included here. And then um fifteen pages of definitions, so just to cover our bases on that and I won't walk you through that, but we do have that as an appendix B. Appendix C is a state requirement, Idaho Regulatory Takings Act guidelines. Uh, every incorporated municipality or and county, uh, any jurisdiction needs to have these. So uh, this is, this is how the kind of the filter um that staff and and the city uses to make sure that development decisions uh do not become a takings issue with private property rights. And then Appendix D is a fairly lengthy community engagement summary. We have updated it with um new dates, kind of extending that a process out here. And then we do have participation um through that first round of engagement and then participation when we reengaged last year um and all of those great uh touchpoints we've had with this board. Um, so this has been updated. Uh, also included in this appendix are the results from both the visioning Visioning Survey, Reengage Survey last fall, as well as the Housing in Neighborhoods Survey uh that was done December, January. So I think that was December, January. Um, so those are the the appendices. And um I guess I I don't have anything else unless there are questions or um comments, you know, the the intent of tonight's workshop really is to make sure that we catch any red flags, fatal flaws, issues that this um commission has before we release it to the public and then start that public review process, which will be a full month um with that open house meeting that Amy mentioned uh later in April. Um, so there'll be several weeks for Um, so, there'll be several weeks for the public to. Kind of read, read through this and come with their questions to the open house. Uh, they'll have an opportunity to comment on the document for the whole month. And then we'll leave up the, the commenting tool for about a week or so after the. Twenty-seventh open house, so that folks can go back in and make additional comments once we've had the chance to talk with them. Um, and then, as Amy mentioned, we would like to come back to this group and city council with a joint work session. To really understand, uh, what direction, um, these bodies would like to see the, the plan revised if necessary. Uh, or if we can move forward with the adoption hearing process. So we're kind of, there's the light at the end of the tunnel, we can kind of see, see the end here.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any other questions for? That for Miriam at this time?
I don't have a question, I have a, a comment though.
Okay.
Again, um, I think this was great work, you guys have done a fantastic job, I know it's been a long haul, and I think. I think the document itself is very appealing. Um, a great visual tool, and I love the append, not the appendix, but the glossary for all the acronyms. Because sometimes those are hard to find on the website.
Yeah.
So, great job.
But it's a fun guessing game.
Try, yeah, if you have the time.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, so Amy, I have a question about the public open house, are. Uh, cause now we're, we're bringing the public back into this, what we started years ago, um, and. That was pre-covid, so the questions that were asked, um, are we gonna ask those same questions to the public? To see if those priorities have changed with them, is, how is the, this open house gonna? Happen?
The open house is really more a presentation of the document as it stands.
So no of the stickers and the, um.
No.
Interaction like we had previously. Okay.
That, that's my understanding, Miriam. Is it's more presentation, information, questions, comments on the document as it is now.
Right, that's the intent of this, and a celebration of where we've, you know, how far we've come. That's not to say that the comments that we, and discussions that we're hoping to have with the public cannot be needy and, uh, you know, influence the direction of the plan. Uh, but we are really hoping for the public to weigh in on how the plan is written to date, and if there are gaps. Perhaps we can address those strategically, um, but not going back to the drawing board.
And Miriam, would it be, um. Convenient for you to pull up, uh, that, uh, conveyor, uh, instrument you were talking about?
Mister Chair, why, why we're doing that?
Yes, Mister McGrath.
So, are, is the implementation action table gonna be a part of the discussion with the public?
It will.
It will, so will we get a chance to? Take a look at that in more detail?
Yes, I. I don't have an absolute day when it's going to be complete, complete, um. And I don't know that we're going to add it to the online documents, we'll probably, well. Yes, we will get it too.
So this is just an example, I actually already had a, pulled up for, um, a project we're doing in Colorado, um. It is conveyor, K O N V E I O dot com, and it's a. What they call a, a document review portal, but essentially, um, you upload a PDF, and in this case, these are. Go workshop boards that we're asking staff for feedback on, um, but you can. Comment anywhere, if you just click, um, anywhere in the document. Put your name in and your comment. Um, add it there, and when other people review, they can see everyone's comments, they can reply to comments. Um, they can like comments. Um, so, for instance, if I pulled this one up, um, I can reply to this, or I can like it. Or thumbs, thumbs down it, thumbs up, um, and so it is a, we call it a collaborative commenting tool in that. In that sense that you really can start a dialogue if you, if you want to. And the benefit from our end is that it's all in one place, all the comments are documented, we don't have to, um. Read handwriting, you know, for handwritten comments, and, um. The, the export is all in one place, so, um, it makes it really easy on the backend for us. And it's transparent.
Mister Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Camp.
Could people rate it if they wanted to? Four stars?
A four stars for the comment? No, it's just a thumbs up for thumbs down.
It looks like, y'all.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner McGrath.
Can people be anonymous, do they have to put their name and email address in when they're commenting?
Uh, no, we can change the settings on the backend, um, and you don't have to log in, you don't have to have an account or anything. Uh, the. Emails are just for, um, for data collection, really, uh, if we wanted to follow up with a certain commenter reviewer, but. That can all be changed in, in the, um, settings, if you do wanna make it anonymous.
Yeah, well, I think that maybe you could put in friends like optional name and email address. I, I think maybe people might tend to. Take more liberty to comment if they felt like maybe their name wasn't gonna be on it.
That's small town.
Although it does, uh, discourage trolls, trolling. But we can monitor it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, Miriam, that's, I, I was gonna ask, we don't, you don't manage it, you're not there answering comments. It's only people that are logging on, commenting on other people's comments.
We have, and we have the capability to respond to comments, you know, if there's a question that, um. That we can easily answer, you know, or, or clarify, uh, we, we have the ability, just as any other user. We can respond and it will say site admin, uh, as the responding reviewer, um, but we, we kind of. Take a hands-off approach for the, the public commenting period in general.
So that'll be available.
I don't think we know the exact.
First week of April, we anticipate.
Gotcha.
Which is next week, so if you do have any additional comments as you. Sit with the document over the next few days, please get those to Amy and we can make sure that those changes, revisions are. Reflected in the draft that goes out next week.
Commissioners, do we have any additional questions or comments at this time?
I do not.
Seeing none.
Are we gonna have food at the, at the open house? Will there be food at the open house?
We will, we're gonna be there, all there, there will be, so.
Definitely gotta advertise that.
Fun time. I'll be, I'll be here.
Advertise that, so you do some engagement.
There we go.
Yeah, refreshments, I think that's a great idea. I don't know what crowded old track butts in there, budget or not, yeah, maybe Mose.
Maybe, uh, maybe a local business could sponsor.
Yeah, maybe they could, maybe, maybe they could. Have a salad bar.
May, maybe, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Alrighty. Before we get off the rails too deep. Uh, we will now proceed with the public comment portion of this meeting, which allows the public to address the commission regarding the draft comprehensive plan. Uh, if there's anyone here in the chambers who wishes to speak, you must complete a public comment form available on the table by the door and hand it to city staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. Madam Clerk, are you aware of anyone who wishes to speak?
On Zoom.
On Zoom.
Yes, we have one hand up.
Alrighty. Um, then I will recite the rules, sho- should I recite the rules, uh, if we have people. Speaking.
Yes, please.
Yes. Um, the commission, um, may not hear or take testimony at this time on any planning or zoning matter. That is before the city or is known to be a likely application, such testimony is allowed only during a properly noticed public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of this meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the commission or by city council may be determined to be inappropriate, inappropriate for the general public comment period. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the commission. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noises and comments or exclamations from the audience. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only, do not direct any questions to the commission or to staff. And do not approach the dais. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, when it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside within Sandpoint city limits. Madam Clerk. Who's speaking on Zoom, should we start there?
Yes, give me one second, please.
Okay.
Okay, I'm unmuting the attendee on Zoom with their hand up, if you could please state your name and whether you reside in city limits.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi there, um, my name is Heather Flintchato, I do not live in city limits, my parents do. I'm an urban planner and environmental designer. And, um, I wanted to just give a little bit of, uh, input. My, um, my field happens to be in environmental design and, and, um, long-range planning and policy. Used to be a government planner in this field and, um, would like to just encourage that. Um, maybe you add a little bit to your public engagement, uh, when you do your open house. You might consider doing, um, in addition to just a presentation, uh, having a little bit of engagement, like a world cafe type approach, so in addition to the. Presentation and questions that you might have, this sort of stations of different topics to. Allow people who may not feel comfortable in a larger group setting to be able to ask questions and, um. Gravitate to the specific topics that they care about. Um, I also would encourage you to maybe try to add just a little bit more buffer. On your response time for communities, sometimes it takes them a while to get organized and understand documents, so, um. A month is a little short for some people, and so I would just say if you can give them six weeks, I think that might. Help people get organized a little bit more, I am not sure if you guys are focusing on kind of a key sites that might be likely to redevelop. As well as goals, I look forward to digging into your documents a little bit more, but that might be an opportunity to set some, um. Further priorities for some particular properties you know are likely to develop or, or zones, um, and to. Set some of those priorities, you have such a special town, and it is. Um, unique, has a lot of incredible, uh, great pattern language of, um. Classic main street type architecture that is, uh, I live in Portland and it is easily eroded and overwhelmed. Um, as, as new development comes, when it's bigger and denser, uh, regardless of style, it can really, um. Negate a community's identity if you don't have those strong tools in place, and so if you have your. Your priorities in your implementation for your cultural resources list, um, to. Help those projects and, and those places, uh. Retain their identity as they grow and densify, so I would just, uh, offer those, we have some great tools that we've been developing with, uh. PDX Main Streets, we have lots of design guideline examples that we've been developing, I'm the director of PDX Main Streets. Find us online at pdxmainstreets.org, and, uh, I would just also encourage you to think about a cumulative impacts analysis as a. Ongoing tool, which is something we use as a planner, thanks.
Thank you. And you wish to speak? And have you? Given a sl- okay, we got it, we're good to go.
Yes.
Alright. Floor is yours.
I've never spoke from the city before, so, trying this, uh, public engagement thing here and after, um.
Thank you.
Following along, thank you, yes, for the, for the past, uh, few months, just following meetings online and finally kind of. Coming to some in person here, yeah, I wanted to applaud the city for like. And just going over that last comprehensive plan overview, it's, there hasn't been a ton of effort put into that document and, um. Just wanna applaud everybody for that, um, I was gonna say. I think the, this, that coming month in April. And actually to kind of keep it, follow what Heather was saying, there might be some more, like this public engagement piece. It could be really crucial at that time, and if it's. And I wanted to just, I can't really ask questions now, but wanted to go over like what specific, what are specific, um. Uh, milestones that you're setting for yourself in terms of public engagement, how many people are you trying to reach over that month? Um, what are like first week, second week, third week, what are you looking at? Gauging up to that one day where you're gonna have face to face. Public comment, um, and then I think you have a variety of engagement forums beyond a presentation. Be really beneficial, um, to kind of break out groups would be a really, is a good thought. And then up until that point, um. If there's even the potential for people to, uh, online commenting documents and make a really powerful tool, so if there could be ways to engage with people. To just work through that on their own time, for example, if it's like two laptops at Evans Brothers. On an alley throughout the whole day, and you can get on it and sit down for the people who don't have a access to a laptop. Or maybe aren't as tech savvy and not knowing how to get to that point. Um, to that website and, uh. I think they're just like providing multiple ways to engage a community up to that one presentation date. And then, uh. Yeah, in that day, really just allowing people to, voices to be heard. And, um. Yeah, and even extending it slightly, I think could be beneficial, recently did an exhibit at the Evans Brothers and it's been up for like four, three weeks now. And like just now, people are finally starting to hear about it and go to it, and so it's like, takes time for people to. Understand what's going on in this community, we all busy lives, and so. Yeah, extending that timeframe for public engagement would be beneficial, I think. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, anybody else joining us on Zoom to speak?
No, Mister Chairman.
Alright. And if that's it, then I will close the public. Comment period for this meeting, thank you all very much for participating, we appreciate. All the input we can get and some great ideas were presented to us, thank you. Commissioner Roundtable time. I have one question, this is just general things to bring up. Um, and I know this is brand new and I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but what was I reading about? Uh, legislature passing something about cities can't add any kind of more restrictive zoning than what they already have. And, and I don't mean zoning, I don't mean zoning, I mean building codes, actually was related to building codes, not zoning. Not aware, just in.
I'm a lecturer, I've been watching the ACI legislation, but I don't know that I can speak to building code legislation.
There was something on building codes and I didn't, and I don't remember the, have you seen anything? Now you, that's okay. Oh, interesting. Okay, something's happening, yeah, which is interesting.
Commissioner, where did you hear that?
In the paper, I believe.
The B?
I believe, but I could be wrong, I don't know. I saw somewhere, I saw a little thing that had a whole bunch of the bills that were, oh, it might not have been in the paper, no, it was not, I think it actually was a document that the Idaho Conservation League put out. Actually, I think that's where I saw it, yes.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I really appreciate, um, Amy, when we discussed the public comment portion and the roundtable. I really appreciate that, um, you know, you, you heard us and, and this is now part of our meeting. And I'm really excited. That we've had two participants in our first time and that's hopefully in, in meetings to come, we'll have. More, um, but I think it's looking bright. First one, two, it's pretty good. So thank you, thank you for, for accommodating. Our. Ideas.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dunkel.
Um, I'd like to add to that, that um. The current, uh, the current climate of the city is. The residents are. Feeling like they're left out and other topics, not, not this topic, but I'd, I'd love for this to not become one of those topics where. Uh, residents felt like this was, you know. Thrown, thrown by them without their, their ability to comment, which. My response is that, you know, it is, it is a residence. Uh, obligation to stay involved if they, if they choose and there's lots of ways to, for that to happen, but I do understand that. Uh, like me and like all of us here, like. If I wasn't a commissioner, there's stuff that I wouldn't know about, I'm sure, and. Specifically, specifically this because it is kind of a. Maybe not a exotic topic that is gonna generate a lot of concern. But I do remember in the previous update that there was. There was more, I felt like I saw more of it in the community, um. In the newspaper, especially, I don't, I haven't seen a lot of updates in the newspaper. But um. I guess I would take it upon myself to try to get the word out in ways that I know how to and maybe if all of us did that at our. Convenience, we'd be able to. Help the word get out a little bit. And I, I don't know what the city could do more than. Have, you know, open houses and workshops and stuff like that. Except to just have more of them, maybe, um. And I'm not sure what, what residents would have a problem with in this document either, it's. It's pretty good, I mean, it's, from what I see, it's. You know, it's co- it, it, it's a lot of vision that. Is, is what Sandpoint wants to go towards, I think. And so maybe that there hasn't been a lot of reaction so far. Is a good sign that, you know, it is something that isn't contentious or, you know. Against the grain of what the city is looking, what the residents were looking for in the future, so. That's nice to see, but I would still like to see, I mean, two people is great, it's. Yeah, it's like the most we've had on something like this, especially. Yeah, outside of a public hearing, that was. An unpopular public hearing, maybe. A, a po- one with nobody against it, we have nobody, so. So yeah, two people, that's maybe, maybe uh. Maybe recent events have helped people to get. A little more excited about voicing their opinion. I think some people were maybe a little bit timid about just getting up here and speaking. And hopefully more people would be able to see that, like, you can get up here and talk about what your opinion is and we're not gonna, like. You know, we're not gonna argue back and forth, cause you know, that's not what, what we're here for. So, and maybe that can help, maybe um. Maybe there's a way to put that info out that, you know, you can come here and talk and, you know, you're free to speak freely. And your opinion will be heard or, and taken into consideration or. Or not, I don't know, if it, if it's applicable, then, yeah. Um, and then also. I mean, people else that don't live in the city. I guess there is a little bit of. I, I don't know if they, it's the same concern. But uh, it seems to be popular that a lot of people that don't live in town have strong opinions about what's happening in town. And a lot of those people are business owners or they do work in town, so, you know, their, their points are considerable. So, that's all.
Thank you. Um, I know that one of, we've seen some of the most recent um, city council meetings, in particular when the room is standing room only. Um, I think quite often that crowd is brought in by. Facebook posts. Does the city have a community engagement officer that manages? Facebook posts so that these sorts of meetings could have greater coverage, I mean. This, I mean, if, if, if someone goes to the city's webpage, cause they want to and they want to find out what's going, they can do that. But if we want them to be more aware, we should try to put them, put it in front of them, instead of having them have to seek it out. And the best way to do that is social media, not the city's webpage.
We, we do, when we do press releases, whether it's for workshops or um. It, we do have Facebook posts, it is the city administrator who. Oversees the social media accounts, um. But, yeah, I, I, we don't have someone who that is there.
Right. No, I would not expect that to be, yeah.
Spend a lot of time on it, but um. We do, we do post on Facebook.
It would be nice to have. You know, um, because e- even when we were at the library last Monday, people don't know about these meetings. And, you know, they've lived here. A lot longer than I have and it's, it always, you know, surprises me. And then, but not at the same time, but still it's, you know, to have to tell people, well, we meet at the first and third Tuesdays and then, well, when does council meet, well. That's the first and third, third Wednesdays, you know, and so it's. I don't know if. We, or it goes on social media every now and then, I don't know what the answer is, but it just seems like people just. Don't know that those basic, you know. Things that have been happening for years on end, first and third Tuesdays, first and third Wednesdays for, forever, um. Like, I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, I don't either, and the, the, the one thing that I see too is that when we talk about some of the engagement we've seen, it's like. In this process has literally been going on for four years. To, to update this document and, and um. And we've had public input, but it's not until it gets to a decision process and that's happened with a lot of the hot topic things we see, it's been. Working through the system for years, it's not until a decision is made that people all of a sudden want to get involved. This document we're working on is foundational. This is where if people are, you know, if they're more involved and get the verbiage that they want. That's gonna direct for some of those more controversial decisions down the road might come, because this is a foundational document. Um, but it's not quote unquote a sexy document on its own, you know, um, but it is foundational for a lot of those other. Things that do come down the pike, but.
Good point. Um, there was, there was. A recent discussion about um, ways to get the info out and um. One of the points was that sometimes stuff was sent out in the city utility bill. And then, and then. And I know sometimes stuff comes in there that. It's not very frequently, but. Um, maybe, I mean, that's outside of our realm, I think, as far as I know, but. But it does seem like the. That could be a way to, to reach just about every resident real, real fast.
The one downside of that is so many people don't get them in the mail anymore. So, you may get your notice, like, here's your bill. But then are you gonna also look at an attachment for, oh, and these are the meanings, I don't know, but. But it is different than when we were physically mailing everybody's bills, so you would, you got something from the city of same point, you opened it. Um, so many people do automatic payments now. So that, it probably is not as effective as it was historically, but. We can find out what, what percent. Or how to. Include it somehow with the electronic notices as well.
It could be a line item on there, but the others, the downside, I would think relatively simply, but the downside to that is that's not all that timely either. If that's only coming out once a month and we're talking about a month long comment period here, uh, it's not likely they would get it in a timely fashion, quite honestly, but.
You know, my opinion on the, that situation with the, I don't know if it's a lack of exposure or a lack of commitment from. Citizens in the way that they prioritize their time. And that's, that can be a commitment, you have to, you have to plan to take a. Every other Tuesday off if you want to follow it, in this case, maybe it's four years, I understand that. Um, I don't know if it's a saturation of, you know, social media. If you're involved with your town, probably do know that there is a planning and zoning and city council. I don't mean it in a derogatory way, but if you're connected. And you're concerned. This is the place to come.
I mean, the onus is on the citizen, that's.
All of you.
Right.
Yep, all of us.
Well, I'd, I'd add to that too, that. This form of a commission is, we are representatives of the community. And so that's why it is, it's important for us to. I guess, gauge our neighbors, you know, or even whether it's on social media or, you know. We're out the community and where we work or where we shop or whatever, but uh. I mean, it's our job to know where we live and to know if something is super unpopular or just isn't gonna. You know, follow the course of what the community wants, so. Um, you know, if nobody shows up. And nobody engages, then, then our opinion is what matters, so.
As representatives.
Yeah, at the end of the day. I'd love to have more people just involved, just cause, you know. Want to feel like, you know, we're important, I guess. But, but reality is, you know, we're, we're just part of the, the system and um. Yeah, and, and, and we were, we're chosen to be here because of our involvement or dedication to, you know, serving or something like that, so. Whatever the reason is, then, you know, that, that's our value, um, so our opinion is representative of the community at the end of the day, I think. But, nice to have people here.
Few, it wasn't that long ago, we came here wearing masks.
Yeah.
Because we cared. Was our job, we committed to it.
Um, I, I think your meetings are on Zoom, so people can be participating in the comfort of their own home. Um, we do. Try to get packets out a week ahead of time, so all the materials are there. Um, we didn't, you know, previously have a comment period, but that's not that people couldn't have reviewed the materials and. Provided input. On what was in the, the materials, but. Um, there's no question, we can always do better and we will. Continue to do better, but I. I do think the fact that this has been going on for so long. Uh, people aren't aware of the engagement that happened early in the process, which is. Is when you're forming the basis of the plan. Um, you know, what we've been doing over the past several months has been taking that. And putting it into context in the different chapters. Um, but. You know, there has been a lot of planning efforts in the city as well, and there may be a little bit of planning fatigue. That there's only so many. Planning processes who, you feel passionate about. Um, but, like I said, we can always do better.
City's very transparent though, I mean, you can go on the city website and find out anything. You just need to know where to look, or you just need to make the effort, but it's. I think that as far as transparency, you can't do any better, really, it's pretty fantastic. Um, so that is. You know, I don't know how you would improve on that, I, I don't know if. What to say about, you know, people that just, well, I don't know where, well, it's all right there. And the library is a great source, the, the computer lab that they have there is phenomenal. Um, for citizens who aren't. You know, hooked up at home. With the technology.
Alright. Anything else from anybody? Well, with no further business before the commission, the meeting is now adjourned at. Is that six fifty-five? PM, thank you all for being here and thank you for commenting.